My check one, one, two. My check one, one, two, one, two, one, two, one, two.
You got it? Okay.
My check one.
Yeah.
My check one, one, two. My check one, one, two.
Okay, do it again.
My check one, one, two.
Okay.
You good?
No, go.
My check one, one, two, one, two.
Okay, go back to the speaker.
My check one, one, two, one, two. My check one. My check one. My check one. My check one.
Good.
We have a good sound. We have a very good sound. We have a good sound. No, neither. Don't cut that out.
Orange, you're on and your mic is live. So if you're talking...
So if you're talking.
Yeah.
Perfect. I want to ask you a question. You're good.
Excellent. Mike. Witness. Oh. Uh, committee on agriculture, thirteen oh two.
Good morning, everyone. This hearing of the Subcommittee on Conservation and Forestry to review the 2015 fire season and long-term trends will come to order. Opening with the, some opening statements. Good morning again, and welcome to today's hearing of the Conservation and Forestry Subcommittee to review the 2015 fire season and the long-term trends. Now this year, western states, including Alaska, have experienced yet another catastrophic fire season with over nine million acres burned to date. Now this continues an alarming trend where the average number of acres burned each year has nearly doubled since the 1990s. As such, the amount of government, the amount that the government spends on suppressing these wildfires has also doubled, while the dollars Congress has allotted for fighting these fires have remained nearly the same. When the fire suppression funding falls short, the financial burden falls on the Forest Service and the Department of Interior to cover firefighting costs from their non-fire budgets. Now these fire transfers are halting the programs and activities that promote forest health and hazardous fuels reduction, and it is impacting local Forest Service personnel nationwide. This year alone, over fifty percent of the national, of the Forest Service budget has gone towards wildfire suppression, and the USDA expects this figure to grow. To many, the solution seems simple: Congress should allot more funding for fire suppression. However, that is not necessarily the only solution. While the budget and the fire suppression funding are issues that must be addressed, we must also look at the culture of how we've been managing our national forests. Forest Service decisions have significant consequences, and we must make sure that policies are in place to keep our forests healthy. Healthy forests require active management in the form of mechanical thinning, prescribed fires, and other activities to ensure that they do not become overgrown tinderboxes. Healthy national forests are more sustainable for generations to come due to decreased risk of catastrophic fires and invasive species outbreaks. Unfortunately, most of our national forest system is unhealthy. In fact, Forest Service staff has identified up, up to one-quarter of the 193 million acres of the national forests as, quote, "wildfire at risk," end quotes. Now, as I mentioned earlier, it is true that the number of acres burned have doubled in recent years compared to the 1990s. However, over the same time, the number of forest fires has stayed constant, or in some years even declined. Our national forests are facing an epidemic of declining health, which is in direct correlation to the policies that have led to a dramatic decrease in managed acres. The Forest Service has drastically reduced timber harvests from almost 13 billion board feet in the late 1980s to only 3 billion board feet of timber in recent years. And it's no wonder that the number of acres affected by catastrophic wildfires has doubled. This loss of forest land could potentially increase, especially if we do not find a comprehensive solution to this problem. The Agriculture Act of 2014 provided the tools for the Forest Service to successfully manage our national forests. These provisions allow for expedited planning for projects, and it reauthorizes programs to allow the Forest Service to streamline projects, such as timber sale and restoration projects, or projects across neighboring jurisdictions. To build on the efforts of the 2014 Farm Bill, the House recently passed H.R. 2647, the Resilient Federal Forest Act of 2015. Now this legislation is an earnest attempt to give the Forest Service more authority and much-needed flexibility to address these challenges of process, funding, litigation, necessary timber harvesting, and essential active management. Now while the administration has publicly opposed H.R. 2647 because of a few provisions, I think there is much more from this legislation that will serve to reduce the catastrophic wildfires. There is not a single solution to solving wildfire, solving the wildfire issue. I hope that today's hearing will allow us to continue a dialogue to identify comprehensive solutions. We're very fortunate to have Forest Service Chief Tidwell testify and be with us once again. Chief, you've been great before about working with this committee and being here and sharing your perspectives, and even between hearings, just, I want to thank you for your communications and your partnership on this, as we deal with this challenging issue. I hope to hear from the chief on his experience with wildfire issues and what tools he has at his disposal, and what tools he needs to further prevent and suppress wildfires. I also look forward to hearing the testimony of our distinguished witnesses on our second panel. These individuals will be able to speak firsthand about the consequences of catastrophic wildfires and the need to find comprehensive solutions to address this issue. And now, please recognize the ranking member, Ms. Laun Grisham, for her opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I really appreciate your calling today's hearing to review the 2015 fire season and long-term wildfire trends. Now although wildfires have occasionally been discussed in committee hearings, it's in fact been more than ten years since a wildfire-specific hearing has been held. In this time, the cost, the size, and the intensity of these fires have been dramatically increasing. Now this deserves our committees and Congress's attention, and this timely hearing, I think, allows us to discuss, I agree with the chairman, a variety of ways that we can help mitigate, prevent, and fight wildfires. Now this year's wildfire season has devastated much of the western United States. Many members on this committee have either experienced devastation caused by wildfires in their states or districts this year, have experienced it in the past, or know that it might just be a matter of time before wildfires impact their constituents. This fire season has resulted in the Forest Service spending 1.7 billion fighting fires. We've seen more than nine million acres burned, thousands of homes destroyed, and thirteen firefighters have lost their lives in the line of duty. Now I'm thankful and grateful that New Mexico avoided any big fires this year, but I know firsthand how devastating fires can be. For three years in a row, New Mexico endured some of the biggest fires the state had ever seen. The Whitewater-Baldy Complex, Los Conchas, and the Gila Fires devastated our land, our resources, and our communities. In this last fiscal year, FY15, the Forest Service spent 700 million more than what Congress and Congress initially appropriated. And as a result, the agency had to transfer funds from non-fire programs to support the immediate emergency needs of fire suppression. Now, in fact, Congress and I was pleased to see that we supported getting that 700 million supplemental request in the CR, but fighting for those supplemental requests is not the best method to assure that we've got the resources that we need to address wildfires. Unfortunately, this is becoming the norm and not the exception. Since 2004, the Forest Service has needed some eight supplemental appropriations, and this fire borrowing trend has been terribly disruptive to the Forest Service's ability to carry out its congressional-mandated mission. Just this fire season, the southwest region, which includes New Mexico and Arizona, lost more than 15 million dollars to fire borrowing. This affected several important projects in New Mexico and put on hold the Santa Fe National Forest Moyosso Project, which is a wildland-urban-interface-fuels-reduction project, the El Medio Forest Renewal Project, which is a thinning project that would have harvested 315 acres in the Carson National Forest, and the Riparian Restoration at Three Pueblos Project, which is a forest restoration collaboration project among the pueblos of Okeewingay, Santa Clara, and Nambey. Now, unfortunately, these types of projects that are put on hold are exactly the kinds of projects that in fact prevent future wildfires. To make matters worse, fire borrowing is only part of the problem. The rising 10-year suppression cost average for wildfires means less funding is going to non-fire Forest Service employees and programs each year. Because of this, the Forest Service now has fewer resources for recreation, research, and development, and road maintenance. There are also fewer resources to carry out NEPA analysis, timber contracts, timber salvage, controlled burns, and other Forest Service management activities. A number of factors contribute to the increase in size and intensity of wildfires, including drought, climate change, and poorly managed forests. But the Forest Service currently lacks the resources necessary to mitigate any of these factors. I'm a co-sponsor of H.R. 167, the Wildfire Funding Disaster Act. Now, this is the budget fix that the Forest Service needs. I'm open to discussing how H.R. 167 can fit with other policy proposals to address our forest needs, but first and foremost, we must fix the wildfire budget so the Forest Service can do the work that everyone on this committee expects it to do. Again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for holding today's hearing, and I look forward to hearing from our witnesses.
Well, I thank the gentle lady, and I was not aware of the fact we're making history today together, sharing this first time in ten years to address wildfires. Let's just hope at the end of this hearing, we, we've made history by identifying some good potential solutions to deal with the problem. The chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record so the witnesses may begin their testimony to ensure that there's ample time for questions. The chair would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who are present at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of their arrival. I appreciate the members' understanding. Witnesses are reminded to limit their oral presentations to five minutes, and all written statements will be included in the record. And before I introduce our first panel, I would just ask that we all pause for a moment of silent prayer, remembering those brave heroes, those members of the United States Forest Service, our firefighters who have lost their lives over the years, and in particular this past year. Very pleased to welcome our first panel. Really, a gentleman has been before this committee a lot, and that is appreciated. Chief Tidwell, you're a great partner, and it's great to welcome you back again on, on an issue that I know is of significant concern to you, and something that you worked, I think diligently to try to come up with the right types of solutions, and we're looking forward to hearing some of that. So, I am honored to welcome the Honorable Tom Tidwell, Chief of the United States Forest Service. Chief Tidwell, please begin when you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, first of all, thank you for having the hearing, and also thank you for giving me the opportunity to present our thoughts about the 2015 fire season and also what we have, the task in front of us. You know, as predicted, this fire season, being hotter, drier, and, and on average, 78 days longer, coupled with historic four-year drought in California, record low snow packs in Oregon and Washington, we had a historic fire season. At one time, we had 27,000 people out on fires. That's in addition to all the folks doing initial attack. We've never, ever had that level of resources out during any one fire season before. I'll tell you, the men and women of the Forest Service and all the federal agencies, the state agencies, the county, local fire, our contractors, they just did an outstanding job. When I looked at what we were up against this year, and we all owe them a debt of gratitude for the, the work, the service that they provided. But once again, we had another tragic fire season, and I appreciate the recognition of the folks that lost, that we lost this year, not only the Forest Service, but other firefighters from other agencies. Where we're going to continue to have large wildfires, we can change the consequences. We can change the level of fire severity. We can change the risk to our home star firefighters, but we're going to need to act. So, first of all, the things we're continuing to do, to have the resources to suppress fires. We continue, this year, once again, ninety-eight, almost 99% of every fire we took initial attack on, we suppressed during initial attack. We have the firefighters, we have the large air tankers that we need, we have the helicopters, we have the engines, and working together with all of our partners, we have really the best response in the world. It's a model for the rest of the world about how to suppress fires. The second part of it, we got to keep increasing the acres that we're treating to reduce the hazardous fuels. In 2014, 4.6 million acres, by far the most we've ever treated in any given year, to reduce the threat and restore our national forests. We've also increased timber harvest by 18% since 2008. We've also reduced our unit costs by 26%. And we're doing this through our long-term stewardship contracts, through our collaborative forest landscape restoration projects, using our new authorities that, thank you for the Farm Bill of 2014. And we're doing this, at the same time, there's 39% fewer Forest Service employees today than what we had 15 years ago. And we're making steady progress, but it's not enough. We have to fix the funding issue, there's just no question. I want to thank you for the CR, for, for repaying the money that we had to transfer. That'll make a significant difference to our communities, to the public, to be able to get that work back online. But we also have to stop the erosion of the rest of our programs that occurs from having to increase the portion of our budget to fire suppression every year. Folks have seen our reports, in 1995, 16% of the Forest Service budget went into fire. 2015, it's 52%. We, we expect by 2025, it'll be 67%. This has had a tremendous impact on our ability to carry out our mission, to reduce fuels, but to also provide the recreational services, to have the road system, everything that the public relies on. So, that's the second thing we have to address. Another couple key points for you to think about. Since 2003 to 2015, the cost of fire suppression went up 740 million dollars. Our budget didn't go up 740. In addition, between FY15 and FY17, with the fire seasons, the last couple fire seasons we've had, the 10-year average of cost for fires goes up another 239 million dollars. And that's for, I mean, that's going to continue. So, without our budget being able to, to go up at the same rate, which is not possible in these economic times, we got to find a fix to be able to first stop the transfer, and I appreciate the work that you've done to be able to recognize that, but that's just part of the problem. We also have to stop how we're eroding the rest of the programs because of the increased cost of fires. I wish I could change the, the situation we have on the landscape. I wish our fire seasons were shorter. I wish we had more precip. I wish it was cooler, but I can't change that. The other thing I can't change is that 50-some million acres that you referenced, Mr. Chairman, it's at high risk. It's also, there's a lot of homes out there. It's another big cost driver for us, and I understand why people want to live out there. I want to live there. I understand that. That's not going to change, but the reality of it, it increases the cost of fire suppression. So, we have to do a combination. Fix the fire funding issue, stop the erosion of the rest of our programs, and at the same time, we got to expand the work that we're doing. In our FY16 budget, we had a proposal that would significantly increase the amount of acres that we were treating and including the amount of biomass sawtimber that would come off of these lands. So, we can do this, and I really appreciate, appreciate the work of this committee. I want to thank you again for the 2014 Farm Bill. What you did there to add those additional authorities are going to really help us as we move forward, and I really appreciate the way you did that, because you did it in a way to give us additional authorities that maintain the public trust so that our collaboratives feel good about those authorities, and we can go out there, and we're implementing that. In fact, we've done, we have 20 projects this year that are using those new authorities. So, thank you very much. I appreciate letting me have an extra minute, and I look forward to your questions.
Chief, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your remarks, Chief. I think, I don't, I know I don't need to remind my colleagues in this, because we understand this. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we turn that on. The, you know, the, the proposal, the request that you made, and what I think many of our members outside of this Subcommittee, and certainly outside the Agriculture Committee, don't realize is, at the Forest Service, if we allow them to do their job, you are a revenue producer. And so, we don't need to be looking for other parts of the government for funding if we're getting the barriers out of your way, you know, with the, the value of sawlog timber alone. You know, you look at the, the variance from where we were at the peak of harvesting in the 1990s, late 1980s, and today, it's, it's like a 10 billion board feet difference, and you look at the value of that. So, I think that, that's why I'm excited about this hearing and the solutions that we're going to talk about today. My first question for you, Chief, is how has litigation affected the Forest Service's active forest management? Has that an impact?
Well, this year, we had 316 projects that would have resulted in timber, you know, sawtimber and biomass. We had 16 of those litigated, so there will be a slowdown of those 16 projects. The biggest impact for this year was no bids. We had over 50 of our sales that we received no bids on. Our folks had to go back, repack those, to be able to find a way in these very difficult markets to be able to move forward. But as I look at, and we, we're probably going to be at 97% of our target again this year with the tremendous work that we did, but that was, as I looked at the big change this year, it was no bids. It's something we're going to have to address, be able to find, you know, some different ways to be able to, to be able to move forward so that we can get folks out in the woods to be able to remove the, the sawtimber, the biomass.
So, and following up on that, because I, I agree. I mean, when it comes to healthy forests, and I like to say then wealthy rural communities, or more wealthy rural communities, you know, it is, it's not just about looking at the barriers that we know we're dealing with specifically, primarily probably in this hearing, but it's about the, the, it's the market for our timber that helps to drive the, the, the active management, and it's the value of the timber. And I know you have a lot of great people working under your leadership on the research side, the laboratory side. I'm blessed in North Warren to have amazing scientists up there that are, and I've been down to the southeastern Pennsylvania, have just, a lot of good people. Of, of your team, what kind of things are we looking at in terms of influencing market and value?
Well, we're, we have our research scientists to continue to do work to be able to find ways to increase using green building materials, wood, in buildings. The Secretary of Vilsack, he, he put out the, the competition to get a couple companies to actually demonstrate how we can use wood for in commercial buildings. So, we're moving forward with that to be able to show that we can use wood to go maybe eight, 10, maybe even 12 stories, to be able to, you know, expand the markets. We also want to encourage more wood in, in buildings. It's a green building material. It takes less energy than steel and concrete, and we need to find more markets, you know, for the wood that needs to be removed. In addition, the small diameter material. Our wood, our Forest Products Lab developed a product called the Cross-Laminated Timber. It's, it's strong, stronger than natural wood, it has, is more heat resistant, and it's the tool that we'll be able to use to, use in these tall, commercial buildings. We also need to look at ways to make it economically viable to use biomass for energy production, to be able to remove that small diameter material, along with, with all the sawlogs. We're also working to, you know, maintain the pellet industry in the, in the southeast. It's being challenged that it's not sustainable. So, our scientists are working to be able to show that, yes, that is also a sustainable forestry practice so that we can maintain those markets. So, those are the things that we're going to continue to work on, but it's essential that we be able to expand our current markets and look for new markets to be able to use the amount of biomass that needs to come off of not only the, the nation, national forests, but we also need to maintain our private land forests. And I'll tell you, without the markets, those are the forests that are probably even most at risk.
Well, thank you, Chief. I, I'm pleased to report, I had a conversation with the United States Trade Ambassador Froman this past week, and obviously, my conversations have been about where, with the TPP, there was just recent announcements on, where were we in terms of forest products, you know, from sawlogs to, to those that are actually, have been cut, the furniture pellets, and, and it was just good news. There, currently today, there are like 800 million dollars in tariffs that really hinder our ability to export what we're harvesting off our forests and get made into something and get, we, we harvest it here and we sell it there, specifically, obviously, in the Asian countries with the TPP. And that was good news. Those are eliminated, at, at least with this current proposal TPP, and I, I think that's, that speaks well for future markets. But pleased to recognize the, the ranking member for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Chief Tidwell. I, I really want to just continue, and to the highest degree of, of maybe having some more specificity that the chairman's initiated with you. So, we know that we have an insufficient budget, even if we weren't borrowing. You're very welcome. Oh, I thought you were talking to me.
I'm pleased to do.
You're very welcome. I, I want that added back, right back to my time. So, we, so we know that if you weren't borrowing, we have an insufficient budget, because you mentioned that we have an incredible increased cost to deal with the fire suppression issues. So, a stagnant budget isn't going to get us there, that while we have an opportunity to have a resource-driven environment by taking fuel out of the forests, marketing those products, we have limitations with the current economy, our ability to engage in a, in a global economy, that, we don't have the infrastructure in, in many places, given the economic conditions in my state. You know, we've lost workers that would have, we'd have to have investments to even replace those, which I would really encourage you to think about getting done in, in my state. So, what are some specific approaches to front-loading the budget, having reliability and predictability about that budget, about spending enough time and energy to both reduce costs by knowing how you might do that more effectively and control those costs, and then to create opportunities for a resource-driven investment right back in to forest management and wildfire suppression? Can you give me some more specifics about how we might create an agenda that this committee could launch in this Congress?
Well, it goes back to my opening comments about, you know, fixing our budget situation with fire suppression. I appreciate the recognition and support on the stop the transfer, that very disruptive practice that almost every year now impacts our operations in August and September, and even when, and I thank, cannot thank you enough for the, the 700 million dollars in the continuing resolution, the additional money to pay back. But we lose a big part of the field season, and we've lost that forever. And so, yeah, we'll be able to continue to bring those projects back online, but we lost a field season, and there's a lot of inefficiencies.
In fact, I think we spend more money in addition to the increased cost for fire suppression because of this sort of revolving borrowing environment that we have.
We do. It's, it's, not only slows down the work, but just imagine the disruption that occurs when we have to contact all of our offices to find out, okay, which projects can we postpone? to find out, okay, which projects can we postpone? Which things are available? Get them to stop the regular work and be able to work on just gathering up all this information, you know, send it back to Washington. We make the choices about, and, and I tell you, we go to great lengths to minimize the impacts of having to transfer for money. But there's no question, there is significant impacts. So, that's part of it. The second part of it, when it comes to the way that we budget for annual suppression, is using the 10-year rolling average. And as I mentioned before, since 2003, it's gone up $740 million. Between '15 and '17, it'll go up another $239 million. And so, under a constrained budget, all that, that money has to come from all the other programs. And many of those are the programs that we use to restore our forests, to provide the services that the public demands.
To mitigate fires.
Yes. So, we need an approach that does both. Stops the transfer and then finds a way that, that we don't have to erode our programs. And that's one of the things why, but we were supportive on this idea of taking 1% or 2% of these very large fires, the ones that threaten our communities, and, and funding those like we fund a natural disaster. And so, that the 98%, 99% of, of all fires would still be covered under the Forest Services budget. But it's that 1% to maybe 2% that I'll tell you, from my personal view, when I look at these fires, when I see the pictures, when I talk to our firefighters, they are a natural disaster in every sense of the word. When I look at the devastation from tornadoes and hurricanes, and I see what happens with these, these few wildfires, I think they just need to be considered a natural disaster. And then, if those could be funded under the proposed, under a cap adjustment, the way we fund other natural disasters, that would eliminate this growth of our 10-year average, allow us to continue to budget for 98%, 99% of the fires. And then, the other key part of it is that it would free up about $300 million in our budget constraint. And that would give the flexibility for us to be proactive, to do more timber harvest, to do more hazardous fuels, to restore more watersheds, and we can actually get ahead of this. Well, we're making very good progress, and I'm very proud of what our folks are doing, what they're accomplishing with all the challenges that they have. But we need to accelerate this. We need to be in a different place, so that 10 years from now, that we can look back and say, because of the decisions we made this year, we made a change. 10 years from now, we can change the fire regimes. We can reduce the threat, but it's going to take increasing our pace and scale. So, we need to fix the budget. The second part of it, you know, the toolkit that we have, that was expanded with the 2014 Farm Bill, the Good Neighbor Authority, to be able to use the Healthy Forest Restoration Act authorities on our large projects, the additional CE, the way it was constructed, very helpful tools that our folks are going to work with it. Our collaboratives find those very supportive. They want to expand on that. But I need to really stress, when we're talking about using categorical exclusions, it's a good tool for small projects, but we have to be thinking much larger. 3,000 acres of the Farm Bill, great CE, but we need to be looking at hundreds of thousands of acres at a time. The work that we've done in Arizona, the work that we've done up in the, on the Black Hills in, in South Dakota, the work that we're doing in eastern Oregon, eastern Washington, I can go on and on. We need to be looking at areas like 100,000, 200,000 acres at a time. And that's the work that needs to be done. So, the, the CE authorities are very helpful. It gives us that opportunity to do that short-term, very, very, most urgent work, and at the same time, for us to be able to look at these larger landscapes.
Thank you. I'm way over time. I'm very grateful for that thoughtful answer and for the chairman's support. Thank you.
Gentlemen, ladies, time expired. A gentleman from Illinois, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief. Got a couple quick questions if I can, and all politics, I guess, is local, but this is a national issue. But I live right on the edge of one of our smallest forests, the Shawnee. And I've got some specific concerns there to find out what is being done as far as fire suppression. I know that the Shawnee is one of the few forests that we don't allow recreational off-road vehicle use, for whatever reason. Does that stop the ability for, when a fire breaks out, the ability to access, or when we look at the other forests around the nation? I'm a little worried, because we haven't had a forest fire in Shawnee for, for some time, but if something does break out, would that?
No, no, it would not. When we have a fire breakout, we, we take whatever steps are necessary to, to deal with that, and if that's mean, if that's using off-road vehicles to be able to get firefighters to that, if it means bringing in bulldozers, helicopters, whatever it takes, we will, we will do that.
I know, I know the, the argument is for, many of the people in the community believe that we should have that access for hunting and everything else. And I was just wondering, as far as trails and things like that, whether it would be, I know, I know you'd want, you'd get there. I understand that.
Yeah, we're, you know, and on that issue, that's, you know, something that, you know, working through the local communities to be able to find the, the right mix of, of uses out there, and there's, there's a lot of competition for, especially on, on your forest. People want to get out there for the recreation and be able to find that, that right mix. And also know there's a lot of equestrian activity, which is great, great country for folks to be able to go out and ride and stuff. And so, those are issues that the local forests, working with the communities, they need to, you know, come to agreement to find that right balance of those uses. But when it comes to fire suppression, we're going to do what we need to do, and that's one of the reasons why we have such a high success rate.
That's, that's gonna lead me to my other question, when, when you start talking about locals, because being born and raised there all my life, and I've watched certain things occur. And I trust you and the Forestry Service to be very wise in properly managing the forest, one, to protect it from fire and to, to use it in the best possible way. I know that we have had our local community, or some that were passed through of our community, that have protested any time that you've tried to do select or clear cutting to make the forest more viable, make it safer. Are you still dealing with that type of problem? Do you do it, do it, do you have that problem ever place else in the United, in the United States, or is it just locally that we have that great problem?
We used to, that used to be a major problem for us across the country years ago. But that's changed, because we've been able to bring the science to the communities to be able to show the work that we're, that we're proposing to do on the national forests is what's necessary to maintain the forest health, the forest resiliency, and that's what drives our work. It's driven by what the land needs to be able to provide that full mix of benefits. When the public understands that, it's a lot easier for them to come together and to say, okay, we understand why you need to do this. Now, let's talk about how and where and the timing of it. That's a lot easier discussion to have, but we've made great headway. I mean, today, you think about it, we have many conservation groups and, and environmental groups that work with us on our collaboratives, that even stand up with us when we get sued in front of a judge saying that, yes, this project needs to go forward, this timber sale needs to go forward. That's how things have changed because of our collaborative work and helping folks to understand, we're doing what the land needs to be able to maintain the forest health, and yes, biomass needs to be removed. And if we can do as sawtimber and help cover the cost, that's a better way for all of us. The public benefits, everyone benefits. It also creates a tremendous number of jobs, and we need the industry. We need the jobs, we need the folks that do the work. So, they have to make money, we want them to make money, and we want to be able to do more of it, so they can, we can expand those jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you're back.
Gentleman Yeo is back. Please recognize General Lee from Washington State, Mr. Dube, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Chief Tidwell, thank you so much for being here. I'm, I'm very, very pleased that the subcommittee called this hearing. It's long overdue. This is the first hearing solely on wildfires that the Agriculture Committee's held since 2003. And as it happens, I was working on a bipartisan letter with broad support requesting a hearing on this very issue, when eventually we heard that a hearing was being called. This is one of the most crucial issues for my district, for my state, the state of Washington, and for many others. In fact, our region, as you know, has been severely impacted, and dedicated firefighters lost their lives. So, it deserves our utmost attention. I spoke to folks at the Mount Baker Snoqualmie National Forest, and I wanted to give you an idea of some of the impacts, the local impacts that fire funding has had. Dollars taken from non-fire programs put in jeopardy the very programs that reduce the threat of catastrophic fires, protect communities, and deliver a multitude of other benefits. This includes such initiatives as restoration work that would help prevent catastrophic fires, protecting watersheds and cultural resources, and providing the infrastructure and programming that supports thousands of recreation jobs and economic growth in rural communities. The largest initial transfers of funds to fire operations will come from the restoration, or restoration of improvements, fire salvage operations, grants to states, and upkeep of recreation facilities. The Mount Baker Snoqualmie National Forest has been impacted by fire, fire borrowing. Funds scheduled to support forest road maintenance, aquatic organism passages for fish and other species, as well as recreation issues such as trail maintenance and sanitation projects have been delayed or deferred. And so, when we hear that feedback right in, in our region, I was wondering, Chief Tidwell, are you seeing those same impacts across the country with wildfire funding draining other accounts across the Forest Service?
Yes. And last year, we put out a report on the fire impacts from FY12 and FY13. We'll be pulling together that information again from the impacts of this fire season. And the thing that's so important to understand is, once again, we do go to great lengths to minimize the impact as much as we possibly can. However, just think about the road work. When we are not able to do the road maintenance that's needed, like when we're, in late in the field season, that's when we get impacts to the roads, because when it does rain, we do get snow, we get runoff, then we have impacts to those, those roads, and so, it's a much greater cost, because we weren't able to get out there and clear out the culverts, you know, before the, before the wintertime. And so, this is just one example of how this, this disruptive practice that, and, and no one's to blame. I don't want anyone to think, I'm not putting any blame on anyone. It's just the system that we've had in place for budgeting, it just, it doesn't work anymore. And so, these are the things that, that the accumulation of these impacts is incredible. When I think about having to move $700 million versus how much work we can get done with $700 million, you know, it, it's just, it's tremendously significant, and we will be pulling together, you know, a list of more of the impacts to help folks really understand. But once again, you know, with the proposal that, that, that came out of the last year's Congress with the Wildfire Disaster, you know, Fund Act, you know, the Congressional Budget Office, they scored as neutral. Doesn't create any more costs, it just stops this disruptive practice. And at the same time, it provides less of an impact of the 10-year average on, on the rest of our programs. So, there are, there are some options there for us to be able to move forward and address this, but it's gonna take both to stop the transfer, and we have to find a way to stop the erosion of the rest of the, of the programs. You know, and so, those are the things that we want to continue to work with, with this committee, to be able to find those solutions.
And I also want to point out that outdoor recreation as an industry is a huge economic driver in our state, and making sure access roads are available has a huge impact on, on many businesses and jobs in our region as well. You mentioned the Wildfire Disaster Funding Act. Does the administrative, administration support that?
Yes.
And if so, why?
Administration supports it because it addresses both parts of the, the fire suppression issue, the transfer, and then the, the, it slows down the growth of the 10-year average, and it also provides $300 million or 400, excuse me, $400 million of flexibility under budget constraint for us to be able then to request additional funds, to be proactive on these issues.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, my time's expired, but I wanted to ask for unanimous consent to submit to the record the USDA report on the rising cost of wildfire operations.
Without objection.
Thank you so much, and I yield back.
Please recognize Dr. Beneszek from Michigan for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, good to have you here, Chief Tidwell. A couple of things that came up earlier, and I, I hope I didn't miss some questions on this, but you talked about the no-bid issue. And from talking to the people that I talk to about harvesting in the forest, it's not about the market so much, it's about the procedure for getting a bid done in the Forest Service, and that it's difficult for loggers to bid in the federal forest because of the way the rules are. I mean, the size of the bid, of the cut, the lengthy process, the, you know, the lawsuits, that is the issue, not so much the market. You made it sound like it was the market. Well, believe me, we got a lot of mills in my district that need fiber, but they kind of given up on going to the Forest Service to get wood, because it's too onerous. So, what, you know, I understand the funding issue. We need to fix this fire funding issue. I mean, that's gonna be our responsibility to do that. And I mean, I'll get into that a little bit more, but later, but, you know, the procedures. I think this is one of the reasons why we've had this problem. You know, over the past 20 years, it's been, been more and more difficult to harvest out of the forest, and that's why we're in the situation we are now with the fire. So, what can you do to streamline, what would we do to streamline the process of getting the timber out of the forest?
Well, you're fortunate, in your part of the country, there's still a fairly strong market, and we didn't have any, I don't think we had any no-bids from your part of the country. It came from other parts of the country. But we are constantly looking at how to improve our processes. That's one of the reasons we've been able to reduce our unit costs on our timber sales by 26% over the last few years. The other thing that we're looking at is making it easier for folks to not only bid and to make sure that we're, we're putting out offers what they need. Part of the problem we had this year was, some of the projects were too large, and our contractors, our purchasers, they, they weren't interested in that, so we had to repackage it. So, we have to do a better job to make sure that we're in sync with not only the market, but also what the purchasers need as far as, you know, the size of the sale.
What percentage of the sales are stopped by lawsuits?
Well, this year, out of 300 and 311, there were 16 projects that were, that were litigated this year and slowed down, you know, this year. And so, that will have an impact on.
You're saying only 16 projects through the country were, were shut down?
16 out of the 311. These are projects that, for, for timber sales stewardship contracting projects.
All right. Let me have, ask another question about disaster harvesting. You know, after Katrina, apparently, the Forest Service was able in 60 days to get the necessary permitting done, to get the, you know, the timber that was damaged by the hurricane, you know, ready to go. But now, apparently, that's not possible with a, with a fire disaster. It takes, I mean, my information says like over a year even to get that consideration, and then it's the point where the wood is no good. So, what, what can be done there to make it an easier process to at least salvage some of the money that's laying on the ground? Or potentially, to help you out? What can we do there?
Well, the reasons we were so successful with Katrina was a couple things. We did salvage, I think, close to 300 million board feet over a very large area, several states, and we were able to use our categorical exclusions to be able to cover those projects. I think it took a little bit longer than what you said, but we were very quick to be able to move that. The reason we were able to do that was, first of all, there was the public trust, because we, it was very clear we needed to do this for public safety and for forest health, to be able to prevent a large insect.
Isn't that same argument hold true in a fire situation?
Well, we'd have it in many places. The other thing we did on Katrina, we didn't spend a lot of time arguing about getting every single stick, every log out of there. We quickly said, this is what we're going after. The areas of concern, like in riparian areas, we're just leaving that alone. Everybody was okay with that. So, we didn't spend all those days, you know, having those discussions. And then, the second, or the other thing that's so important, we had the staff. That was what Katrina was 10, 10 years ago. We had a lot more people, had a lot more foresters out there. You know, today, we have 49% fewer foresters today than what we had in 2000. So, we had the people that could quickly, you know, move. So we had the people that could quickly, you know, move. Now, you look at what we did last year in California following, or the year before following the rim fire, we went after 300 million acres on one fire.
Why can't you use the categorical exclusion for fires?
Well, with the rim fire, we looked at treating a much larger area. So instead of doing, removing 300 million board feet over several states, over multiple forests, we had, we went for 300 million off of one forest, off of that one fire. We were able to move the roadside salvage rather quickly, and then we did the larger project that also included the restoration work, and we were able to get it done in a year. And then we struggled to be able to get anybody to take the material. And the reason for that is that the mill, the mill that's in that vicinity, they have a lot of private timberland. It too burned, and so there was just no market. They needed to remove their sawed timber, which they did, and, but then there's all this additional sawed timber, and if, if we were able to have moved that to a different part of the country, somehow had a transportation subsidy, or somehow to be able to move it to a different mill, we would have been able to sell more of it. But that's, you know, been the struggle. And so you get these big fires in one location, it over, you know, it just saturates the market. And we don't have the ability to be able to move that material to different parts, even of the West, and we would have been able to, I think, would have been able to find, you know, a buyer for the rest of it. We're still working to try to get more of it done. But the difference is that on these large-scale projects, when you're looking at, you know, 100,000, 200,000 acre restoration project, you need to take the time to involve the community, local officials, to be able to determine what needs to be done. And yes, it takes some time, but we were able to get that project done in a year, be able to complete the EIS. But at the same time, you know, without, you know, a stronger market, it's difficult for us to be, in that case, we're difficult to be able to move.
So is there a minimum price you have to ask for the timber?
There is. There is a minimum price, and part of what we're looking at, we also have a system where we appraise the material, and so that is.
Yeah, well, that doesn't, you know, seem, you have to understand, it's a fire sale. I mean, you're not going to get the same price for, you know, going in the woods after a fire than you're going to get out of raw timber. I mean, come on.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot more work, it's more dangerous, it's a lot of stuff going on.
Gentlemen's time's expired.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Good questions, great, good discussion. Please recognize for five minutes questioning the gentleman from Arizona, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and ranking member, and my colleague from Washington for having this hearing. Chief Ted Tidwell, I also want to thank you for, and your office, for being so responsive and accessible to me about these forest issues, and want to thank the Secretary and you for your support of the For Forest Restoration Project, which is a very collaborative, innovative forest health timber industry type of model that we believe can be used nationwide. But, but as you know from our discussions, I'm very practical. You know, I grew up in a timber community, and I've always, you know, we lost a generation of loggers and lumber mills and all of that knowledge, and trying to bring it back has been a little more difficult than we, we expected it to be because we just lost that knowledge. And I've always wanted to see those logging trucks back on the highway, and I saw them this summer, not as many as I wish. But, you know, I want to talk with you, you know, I've been back in the forests, you know, on those roads, and I've really seen a disintegration of the roads. And that is harming some of the logging companies to get, be able to get back into that forest and harvest those logs. And so do you have a budget specifically for roads? I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of what it would take from a very practical standpoint to bring those roads up to a standard where our trucks can get in there and harvest the wood?
We do have a budget line item for road maintenance. It's another one of the budget line items, and it's been significantly impacted over the years because of the cost of fires. And in the past, years, decades ago, when the sawed timber had a much higher value than it does today, it was able to cover a lot of the maintenance costs on those roads. But with the sawed timber and the biomass that needs to be removed today, it's part of the problem we have with our appraisal system, there's, the market doesn't, isn't strong enough to be able to cover the costs of that road maintenance work plus to remove the timber. So it's one of the things we've had to look at to take out those costs to maintain the road. The problem with that is, after you put the log trucks across the road, they're going to impact those gravel roads. And if we aren't maintaining it, then next year, the public can't get in there either. So it's, short-term, it works for a year or two, but long-term, we've got to find a system so that we can maintain the road system for the public access, but at the same time, to be able to, to be able to access it for logging and biomass removal. So that's a good example of what's happened over time to our budget, is the loss of our road funding that's occurred to be able to stay up with the maintenance, to provide access for everyone.
I really appreciate your thoughts on that, and I just want you to know, that's a top priority of mine. I'm also on transportation and infrastructure, and, you know, roads is so important to this whole idea of, of healthy forest management and fire prevention that I think we sometimes forget. The other thing, I really appreciated your comment about expanding the market for wood products. And I'd like your thought about what kind of incentives, excuse me, what kind of incentives we could put in place to actually help expand the market?
Well, we had the incentive in the Farm Bill that would help, would subsidize the transportation of biomass that we were able to very effectively use in places to be able to, to really get that industry started. And I think there's some benefit to be able to have incentives when you're trying to create new industry, and so they can figure out the economics and stuff, and they need some assistance over the, you know, ideally over the few years. You know, that's, you know, that's one benefit that we've seen. I think another ways with our long-term stewardship contracts, where we guarantee that there's going to be X amount of work for the next 10 years, the purchasers then can take that to the bank. They can borrow money on that contract, they can invest in equipment, they can invest in personnel, create more jobs, because they're guaranteed. Either they'll, they'll have the work to do, or we will then pay them. So either way, the banker's happy with it. That's another area we need to, you know, continue to be able to expand. The other is with our collaboratives, like what you did with the Farm Bill, with the CE, where you required the collaborative effort. It's a tremendous incentive to bring people together to be able to use this new tool to be more efficient, more effective, and be able to get some more projects going forward. I think also, when we look at, you know, the use of wood in this country, and it kind of got a bad name for years because people were so worried about why we were doing the work. And today, with the understanding that we need to use wood to be able to restore our forests, it's like, it's a good thing to do. It's like to use it for furniture in our buildings. And the more that we can find ways to help folks to understand the, why that is, it saves energy, it's a green building material, and by doing that, it provides the economic activity so that we can restore our forests, reduce the hazards. So those are some of the things that we want to continue to work on.
Thank you. My time is expired, but I look forward to working with you more about this, and again, appreciate your testimony here today. I yield back.
I'm pleased to recognize the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Allen, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Chief, if you want, with us, a quick question, I don't know how long this is, but.
Did I turn it off? There we go, sorry. As a small business owner in a, in the construction business, we elected to not do work with the federal government because of things like, for example, Davis Bacon and other things like that. Are you required, are you under the requirement, same requirements in federal contracting for, for loggers in the Forest Service as we are in the, say, with the General Services Administration and folks like that? Are the same, like Davis Bacon, are you required to implement Davis Bacon?
When we're doing a service contract, under the federal acquisition regulations, we follow Davis Bacon.
Okay.
Under a, you know, a timber sale contract, we have some different flexibilities.
Right, right. Well, do you, I guess, what you probably should do is talk with some of your, these folks who are great contractors out there, and maybe see what you can do to make that process a little more attractive to them, because frankly, it's a lot easier to do work in the private sector than it is for the government. Going back to the collaboration effort, you know, we're going to hear testimony from some of our ranchers here lately about their issues as far as being good neighbors. And I don't think the government has been a very good neighbor. We have created some real problems for our private landowners because we have not done some things, I mean, I mean, we deal with the pine beetles down south. And so are you, can you tell me, what can you do to collaborate with our, with our neighbors and be more neighborly? And what restrains you from doing what, you know, they're doing, we have a 40% sustainable rate in Georgia. We grow 40% more trees than we cut. I mean, we're doing a lot of really good things. Can you learn from them? Can you collaborate and say, hey, let's be good neighbors, and we want to do some of the same? What's restraining you from doing that?
You know, it goes back to our, our funding issue and the lack of staff, but the things we are doing is, we're looking at large landscapes that include not only the private land, but also the public land to be able to look at, what we can be doing by working together. Working with NRCS and using their authorities, we're doing these pilot projects, what we call our Two Chiefs projects, where we bring NRCS authorities and their funding, along with Forest Services authorities, and work with the private landowner to be able to do work on their land and on the national forest at the same time. It produces efficiencies with contracts, it allows us to address the issues over a much larger scale, whether it's something to deal with southern bark beetle, whether it's to deal with invasives, about improving overall watershed conditions, improving forage conditions. So it's just, it's an example that we want to continue to expand on. We want to be a better neighbor. With the Good Neighbor Authority that we have with the 2014 Farm Bill, it expands our ability to be able to work across lines so that when it comes to forest pest issues, they don't stop, they don't know border, they don't stop when they hit a boundary on private ground or on national forests.
Well, so you say your only restraint is funding?
Well, there's no question, and if we had the staffing that we had, you know, 15 years ago, where we'd have 40% more employees out there, we could be doing a better job to be a good neighbor, to be able to be working with our adjacent landowners. There's no question about that. But that being the case, these are the other things we're working on.
Well, you know, obviously, the forest land belongs to the people of this country.
Yes.
And I think we all have an interest in protecting that forest land. And I think, you know, public-private partnerships are working well everywhere, because like I said, we can get things done a lot faster and a lot quicker on the private side than, say, you're capable of doing. So I would, I would ask you to investigate ways that we can manage our forests so that we don't have these, have these problems. Obviously, the fires are a problem, and I'm just about out of time, but what is the biggest thing that's keeping you from preventing forest fires, other than money?
It's the climate. Having hotter, drier fire seasons that are now 78 days longer on average, that when we get, say, 300, 500 lightning starts in one day, one night, yeah, we'll get, we'll get 98, 99% of them, but there'll be that one that gets away. And with the conditions that we have, how dry the fuels are, when we're dealing with places like in Southern Calif, or California, where you have four years of extensive drought, that's, you know, that's the problem. So it's going to take a combination of continuing our suppression resources, our suppression efforts, but we also need to be able to expand, thinning out these forests, so that when we do get that start, it's a lot easier for the firefighters to be able to suppress that fire and reduce the threat to our communities. So it's a, it's kind of a twofold problem. We need the resources, we need to fix the budget, and then we need to expand the work that we're doing on the landscape. The work that we've done in the South, it's an example for the rest of the country about how people came together years ago, figured out what needed to be done on the landscape, and make the difference, so.
Well, we want to work with you. My time is up, and I yield back. The gentleman yields back. Pleased to recognize the gentleman from New Hampshire for five minutes questioning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to our chair and vice chair, and to Chief Tidwell for being with us today. I'm going to start with just, excuse me, a very brief personal story, because I come from New Hampshire, and I want to get into questions about how the firefighters in the West are reducing resources in the Northeast. But I had a personal experience this summer. We all went out to my niece's wedding in Washington State, beautiful Cascades, 22 of us, had a wonderful time, really beautiful area. My brother moved out there 40 years ago as a logger, and now he builds second homes for dot-com millionaires, and a really nice area. But the week after, we came home, his town is, not only the town, but the road and the neighborhood where sadly the three firefighters died in Twist, Washington. And when I reached him on the phone that night, and I said, are you okay? He said, no, we've all been evacuated, my pregnant niece, my nephew, and it was a very harrowing few days. And I just want to thank you and all the firefighters out there. It was a sheer miracle. He went back up to the house that he had left some fire, I mean, some sprinklers, and at midnight, 20 guys on a crew showed up and two tanker trucks, and saved his home. And I'm just incredibly grateful, and I want to go out to all the firefighters across the country, and I'm so sorry for the family that lost their 21-year-old son headed back to college, and the three folks who died. So I want to start with that, that this is an issue that is impacting all of us across the country. But just to return to the impact on your budget and what this means for the rest of us, and just want to weigh in, and I think my colleagues on both sides of the aisle want to solve this budgetary problem, I'm interested in your approach of a, taking off, sort of pulling off 1% or 2% these very large catastrophic fires. And having been out there for a week, I can certainly say that all through the West, the dryness, the drought, and whole communities being lost. Our colleague, Mike Thompson, talks about the loss of homes, middle-class families that cannot afford to rebuild. So could you just comment, if you will, on the impact on lost timber sales? And you've gotten at it a little bit, but if we could go back to that, lost timber sales for us back east, and I'm concerned, if we run into a drought, we're going to be facing wildfires on both sides of the country, if you could get to that?
Well, one, one specific example of that, on the Colville National Forest in eastern Washington, we, I think we had two or three of our collaborative forest landscape scale projects that were teed up to get started on, and all three of those projects, all three of them were timber sales, all three of them did burn. So we, we lost the investment of all the planning to do the work. We'll be able to get an introduced salvage and recover, you know, some of the material and stuff, and be able to accomplish many of the objectives. But, you know, that's one specific example of, on the other hand, I give our folks credit. They had planned the projects in the right place to make a difference. They were just a year, they needed one more year to get the work done. But we do, you know, we, we do lose every year. We use some of our actually timber sales that are prepped, ready to go. In fact, had fires that burned through active timber sales this year. We try to get the folks back in there as quick as we can to be able to remove that material and stuff. But you've got to remember that our timber sales are focused on improving the forest health, reducing hazardous fuels, because we do a lot of hazardous fuels reduction with our timber sales. Almost every single one of them provides that benefit, along with improving the forest health. So it has an impact on both. It also has an impact on our purchasers, our loggers, that we just have to be able to keep them in work so that they're around to be able to do the work. And so that's another consequence that I'm also worried about, is to being able to, we need to increase the work that we're doing on a sustainable basis so folks can make the investments, expand their businesses, to be able to do more, more of this work.
Well, on behalf of the rest of the country, I really want to emphasize that testimony and make sure that, you know, our colleagues on both sides of the aisle can work together. This is such a rare issue, can I say, where we have. This is such a rare issue, can I say, where we have a solution. Many of our issues in Congress, we don't have a solution, and we clearly have a solution in front of us, and I hope we can work together. And then just as I'm closing, Mr. Chairman, if I could put in a shameless plug for our new biomass caucus, Bruce Westerman, Republican from Arkansas IV, and I have just started a biomass caucus, and I want to invite my colleagues on both sides of the aisle because it's a wonderful solution to some of those timber products that aren't going to go into board feet, but thank you very much.
No objection to shameless plugs. The gentleman from California, Mr. Costa and Mr. Ogular, is, are not members of the subcommittee but have joined us today in pursuant to Committee Rule 11E, have consulted with the ranking member, and we're pleased to welcome them to the questioning of witnesses. I'm pleased to recognize at this time Mr. Costa from California for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and the ranking member, for holding this important subcommittee hearing. It is timely, and I hope that on a bipartisan basis, we'll come up with some efforts to try to deal with what is becoming not just a Western states problem, but a national problem because of the impacts on the budget. I too support H.R. 167, and I have a number of questions, so I want to get to the heart of the matter and I'll submit the rest when, as time runs out. I think it's a misnomer now, though, to say the fire season because it's no longer a season. With these drought conditions, we're really talking about in places like California and certain areas, 365 days a year when you look at the impacts. Let me just give you some quick examples. January 1st through September 26th, which was a couple of weeks ago, we had 5,496 fires in California, on California lands that burned 305,000 acres. On federal land, we had 1,869 fires that burned over 501,000 acres. Combined, these fires in the nine-month period have burned total 7,365 fires that have burned over 806,000 acres, and the year's not over. And obviously, I mean, a week ago, we had, I think, 26 fires going on concurrently in California, thousands and thousands of people. And of course, my heart also goes out to those firefighters and those that have lost their lives and their families. The average last year was, to give you comparison, we had 3,818 fires last year for 190,000 acres. So it has become exponentially a real problem. Let me get to the questions quickly because of my time. As you said, Chief Tidwell, we thank you for your service and your team. The budget that was authorized appropriated of a little over $1 billion, and you're now up to $1.7 billion in expenditures. In that situation, what impact do you see these programs having on their funding being re-appropriated?
Well, with the 700 million that we received in the CR to repay this, we'll be able to go back and be able to implement a lot of that work this coming year. The thing that we've lost, though, is that field season, that three or four or five weeks, that even with the money now coming to get the crews back out there, to do the road maintenance work, to do the cell prep for the next projects, to do the inventory and monitoring work that's so essential that, because without that data, we're not able to be able to move forward.
We've had conversations with the California Fire Chief, Ken Pimlaud, who you work with, and he talked about the reductions of federal expenditures and how it has serious impacts on local operations. And without proper funding mechanism, it further complicates the efforts for the men and the women who are on the ground fighting the fires, both at the state and local levels. What can be done to provide the maximum amount of assistance to boots on the ground for our firefighters?
Well, stop the transfer, stop the erosion of our proactive programs so that we can create a safer environment for our firefighters, so there are less risk to be able to protect communities and be able to suppress these fires.
Right, and I think that's an important point, and I think the other members, and I concur with the comments that they've made previously, because we're not able to do proper forest management on these fires, what we have now is fires that behave, behaviors have changed. They previously burned with less intensity, today they're burning with more intensity, and they're staying under the tops of the trees, in many cases, being good forest restoration. We're seeing fires burning hotter and more extensive because we have more biomass out there. And for California in drought conditions, it has further compounded because the water that normally would recharge into our aquifer is going to support this additional biomass that normally we would clean and move out of there. So it further complicates the efforts. Do you think Chief Tidwell would be able better to manage the budget situation if we had a 10-year average cost of wildfire, firefighting management budgeted?
If we could, if we can budget for and cover the full cost of our fire season, is we have to find some solution. The problem with the 10-year average is the...
With change in the climate, we don't know what 10-year averages are anymore.
We can't, exactly, sir. We just...
What can be better done to manage the forest in order to reduce the size and the intensity of these fires?
A combination of two things, get out there and increase the acres that we're thinning, increase the forest resiliency through removal of biomass, and then also the use of prescribed fire in the backcountry. It's going to take all of the tools available to make a change in the fire regime.
Well, my time's expired, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the work of the subcommittee, and I commit to working with all of you to try to come up. You know, one of that old definition of insanity is doing things the way you've always done and expect different results. And this, I think, applies here, and we need to come up and figure out a way to do it better.
Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us today. Please recognize the other gentleman from California, Mr. Ogular, for five minutes.
Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity and the invitation to be here and to share some of the concerns and the questions that I have as well. Chief Tidwell, I represent San Bernardino County, which is just adjacent, includes the San Bernardino mountains that are just north and have caused considerable wildfire issues locally as well. Earlier this year, there was a fire that started June 17th and reached 90% containment on the Fourth of July. 31,000 acres were burned and nearly $40 million in damages. And it's speculated, as you've discussed, that the prolonged amount of time that it burned was as a result of dead vegetation and other issues that had not been managed. So, you know, if you could continue to kind of walk me through, you know, that piece, what role timber sales and controlled burns and play in the prevention of fires and how your budget continues to be crowded out because of the catastrophic fires and that top 1%? And specifically, what programs, you know, continue to be affected, you know, by that budgetary crowding out?
Well, first of all, we need to recognize that the conditions we face today are a result of the climate change that we're experiencing, where with these hotter, drier, longer fire seasons, we need to remove more of the biomass off of the landscape through a combination of mechanical treatments, timber sales, and also using prescribed fire to reduce the amount of biomass. The second part of it is that when you look at these 1% of these large fires, there's no question, they should be, they are a natural disaster, and we ought to find a way to budget for it appropriately, and then free up our ability to be proactive on the work. What's been impacting our programs that affect our ability is that if you look at over time, how much capacity we've lost with 39% fewer employees that are outside of our fire organization. They're the folks that would do the veg work, vegetation management, the watershed improvement work, they're the folks that would be dealing with improving the roads, doing the road maintenance. They're also the folks that put the planning together so that we know what we need to do to be able to work with the communities. So it's had an overall impact on our ability to manage. And it's not just one program. By maintaining funding, say, in our forest management program, that in itself is not enough. The way that we work, everything is interrelated, and it's the way we go about our mission. And if you just have one program that's you're able to maintain the funding at, you're still going to be impacting our ability to get all the work done. And that's the thing that folks need to understand. When it comes to forest health, it's not only our forest products, it's not only our hazfields funding, it's also our using salvage cell funding, it's using our KV funding, it's also using our road funding. It takes all of that to be able to manage these forests for the public.
And it affects every other line item that you have within your budget, and I think that's clear.
It does.
As well as, you know, the fires in the West, as Ms. Custer mentioned, you know, affecting some of the work that needs to be done out in the East as well. You know, the definition of the top 1% of catastrophic, you know, fires, I understand from a budgetary standpoint, you know, that we would want to be, you know, cautious with that. How would you define that? Would it be by acreage, by damage, by manpower? You know, what would rise to that level of that top 1% of catastrophic fires?
Well, there's several proposals out there, even going back to the language that was in the Flame Act that we're currently working under, and also in the Wildfire Disaster Fund Act. But really, what they are, are the fires that, because of the size, the complexity, and the threat. So if you look at just the top 10 fires in FY15 so far this year, those are the ones that CNN's covered, all the other networks, the news covers. Just those top 10 fires, $280 million. That's just 10, and that's not even a fraction of, I mean, it's a fraction of 1% of all the fires that we deal with. Those are the type of fires that were, that were believed should be considered a natural disaster. Those large-scale fires, the ones that burned for weeks, the ones that burned through the communities, those are the ones that we would look at. And we want to work with, you know, the committee to be able to come up with the criteria and have a way to say, yeah, these are the fires that we'd want to fund this way.
In order to have that flexibility, you know, I know that you need that flexibility in order to protect our communities, and I think it's something that we need to do. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much again, Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman yields back. Chief, thank you so much for being here and for your testimony and for your leadership. Very much appreciated. With that, I'm pleased to call our next panel to the table. On the second panel, we will have Mr. Rob Haberly, owner of Haberly Ranch in Okanagan, Washington. Hopefully, I got that close, Ron. Also, pleased to be joined, welcome to the second panel, Dr. Christopher Thopey, Director of Restoring America's Forests and Nature Conservancy. And I yield to the ranking member for introduction of the next two witnesses.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We have two New Mexicans here, and I'm delighted that you're here to share your experiences. And unfortunately, as you've heard in testimony by my colleagues and by myself, we all have personal experiences, unfortunately, with severe wildfires. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Chief Eric Littenberg, and he's the Fire Chief for the Santa Fe Fire Department, and he's testifying today on behalf of the International Association of Fire Chiefs. So welcome, Chief. And I also want to welcome Colonel Ronald Priddy. He's the Director of Government Affairs for Ten Tanker Air Carrier from Albuquerque, which is, of course, the heart of my district. I want to thank you both for making the trip, and, Mr. Chairman, thank you for yielding to me.
I thank the gentleman lady. Welcome to panel, and we'll get started. Sir, Ms. Haberly, if you go ahead and proceed with your five minutes of testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak today. Log it, graze it, or watch it burn is the subject of my testimony to you today. In 1975, while I was working for Crown Zellerback Lumber Company, the spotted owl endangered species controversy began. Shortly thereafter, with no bonding or scientific proof, a 37-cent stamp on a letter of protest for each timber sale was enough to begin voiding the timber industry where I worked. The result was no logging, no resource to the mill, and the eventual closure and dismantling of the mill for scrap. Along with that, loggers and mill workers lost their jobs, merchants lost business in town, and the domino effect led to a tremendous downturn in the local economy. Since that time, logging has nearly diminished in the Okanagan-Wanachi National Forest in Washington State. The unintended consequences of the environmental movement that began 40 years ago in our forests is an ecosystem that has become densely overgrown. The canopy has completely closed in most places, and underlying forage has been diminished by high volumes of underbrush and debris. These forest conditions have resulted in unhealthy forests that are prone to disease and wildfire. As a result, firefighting has become big business. The 2015 fires of Okanagan County have scorched 509,739 acres and is still growing. It has cost an estimated $100 million. Firefighting practices over the last 40 years have also changed. Initial attack by smokejumpers, bulldozer hotlining, and aircraft drops of water are retarding on the fires immediately, immediately after they are reported is a concept of days gone by. Today, hours and hours, sometimes days, pass before the fire's attack properly. Too much time is wasted determining who has authority of the fire. The Resource Division is notified, and the Priority Authority orders to determine resources after they have gone through all of the channels. In the meantime, the fire gets away from them. One Black Hawk helicopter loaded with water should be available for immediate initial attack. Backed up by other resources as necessary, this could potentially extinguish nearly every fire before ever reaching any significant magnitude. Recently, backburns have been used more extensively. The frequency and magnitude of their use has become the subject of a lot of controversy with local firefighters. This year, many of them were failures resulting in huge economic losses of timber and grazing Fire briefings for firefighters and contractors are mandatory each morning at 6:00 a.m. They inform expected weather, including humidity, temperature, wind, and dryness of fuels. Safety, radio channels, aerial programs, human resources, updates, sports updates, and fire updated maps are provided. Division supervisors for their assigned personnel are included in these briefings. The break of daylight is the lowest temperature, highest humidity part of the day. Consequently, the early morning hours of the day will yield the most production on ground and aerial results. Again, these are opportunities that are wasted on a daily basis. Local personnel should be used in selecting dozer lines rather than out-of-area people. This year's fire had a large amount of out-of-state division supervisors who did not know old logging roads or areas where dozers could have been less jeopardized and saved many more structures and acres from burning. Noxious weeds after a fire will germinate very prolifically with spring moisture and dew. If they are eradicated before going to seed, they will be eliminated or reduced significantly. If they're ignored and left go to seed, they will take over large tracts of ground and eventually crowd out desired forage for wildlife and livestock. Noxious weed management should be a continued and ongoing effort. Fire in well-managed property can be used as a valuable tool in cleaning up low-lying ground fuels and stimulate forage growth without destroying valuable timber. These forests are a savings account for future generations, both in economic value and the health of our planet. Selective timber harvest, prescribed burning, reseeding, noxious weed control, and flexible grazing programs are key to reducing the fuel load that drive the magnitudes of these fires. Immediate initial response to wildfires by aggressive air attacks would come at an overall price savings. In my opinion, the continued neglect of our forests that leads to their eventual destruction and the loss of enormous savings of economic wealth and environmental stability should be a crime punishable by law. Let's make the commitment to spend a fraction of what you have spent fighting the fire and spend it instead on proactive measures to sustain healthy forests. Hire people to selectively log appropriate densities of the trees, thin underbrush and debris, and using low-intensity fires in late fall and winter to clean the forest floor. Doing so will create an abundance of vegetation for wildlife and livestock grazing, which converts into edible protein and vitamins for humans. Log it, graze it, or watch it burn, and watch it burn we have. Let's pay it forward to the future generations by... Let's pay it forward to the future generations by renewing our forests and rebuilding our economy in a partnership that honors best practices in the management of our natural resources. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Please recognize Dr. Toppick now for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Ranking Member. Greatly appreciate you having the hearing. The Nature Conservancy has a long and extensive history of working with both good and bad fire. We focus on science-based conservation action with many collaborators to help make communities and nature safer and fire resilient. I believe that working together, we can turn around the current negative fire trends that put our communities, our infrastructure, lifelines, our clean water, our wildlife, and our great outdoors all at risk. It won't be easy, and it won't be fast. I'm going to talk about three things today. First, we need to fix the wildfire funding. Second, we need to expand opportunities for communities to become fire-adapted. We haven't talked about that enough. And we need to implement the balanced national cohesive fire strategy. So first, we need to fix the way federal firefighting is funded. This should be done like other major disasters, not out of the operating accounts that we need to care for our lands and waters. And this can be done now with the Wildfire Disaster Funding Act, and it shouldn't be tied to other issues. Without success here, I think everything else is at risk. The Wildfire Disaster Funding Act is the one proposal that can access the disaster funding cap. It minimizes impacts from fire borrowing, and it addresses the increasing cost of emergency firefighting over time that the chief talks so much about. The current federal budgeting system is broken. It prevents decent business practices at our agencies. The uncertainty of funding and amounts, timing, and fund withdrawals has large impacts. The emergency fire funding shortfalls also harm key projects. Not to pander, but, for instance, in the east, about 56 million board feet of timber was impacted by loss of marking contracts and agreements in FY13. In Pennsylvania, road repair, invasive species treatment, timber stand improvement, wetland restoration, erosion control projects were canceled or delayed. And I just learned that on the Allegheny National Forest, certain specific hemlock-wooly adelgid protection projects were canceled, and some vital research on decline of black cherry was halted due to emergency fires sucking up the federal resources. In New Mexico, we know that hazardous fuels management, road decommissioning, oil and gas, trails, and land acquisition projects have all been canceled. Well, second, the most cost-effective and undervalued solution to harmful fire is structured engagement within and among the communities that are at risk. It's essential to help develop local skills and visions for communities to protect themselves and their surroundings. Different places will have different needs, and different cultures will generate different solutions. Very modest investment by feds, state, tribes, industries will yield much more fire-resilient communities. Community mitigation and home care actions can have huge benefits. For example, the analysis of the Waldo Canyon Fire in Colorado by the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety. I especially want to do a shout-out for the relatively new but immensely promising Fire-Adapted Communities Learning Network. In just two years, it's helping 17 places, ranging from small communities to huge cities like Austin. It helps local people figure out what they need to do to deal with fire, and its national network brings best practices and lessons learned to a wider application faster. Soon, this network will expand, and I hope it does a lot more. And finally, way too much discussion, I think, on the Hill is focused on timber harvest as the solution to the fire problem. We know that many of the most damaging fires have been in woodlands, brush, chaparral, and areas that are not even suitable for commercial timber. For instance, the Valley Fire destroyed 1,958 structures in California last month and cost close to $60 million to suppress. And many of the most deadly and impactful fires have been in Southern California chaparral and woodlands where forestry is not relevant, but defensible space creation is essential. And forest thinning is certainly important in needed areas where it can reduce fire danger, especially when followed by controlled burns, but it's one of many solutions. There's a good plan that we should implement. That's, we all need to get the governments at all levels in the U.S. with industry and private sectors to fund and implement the three legs of the cohesive strategy. First, that includes resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, and safe and effective fire response. But right now, fire response in America commands nearly all the available resources. As a nation, we don't seem to hesitate to respond in massive fashion during immediate emergencies, but we're not good at funding preparedness and mitigation that we all know has a great return on investment. I do, however, want to commend the U.S. Fire Administration and DHS for some exciting recent progress. But however, the imbalance that we see prevents us from taking the community-based steps that are needed, and it doesn't allow us to properly manage forests, shrublands, grasslands with good fire and good forestry. We need in federal investments in collaborative forest landscape restoration and other proactive land management projects, as well as investments in science to yield faster and more effective treatments. Greater federal involvement in cost-share projects with states and tribes, as well as county and local governments, will yield greater results, and the shared decision-making reduces conflict. I hope this committee will work with other committees of jurisdiction to establish new ways of increasing community capacity to engage in this new collaborative stewardship. Again, please, three things. Pass the Wildfire Disaster Funding Act. Implement and fund our national cohesive strategy that's four years in the making, and expand opportunities for our communities to be better adapted and durable to fire. We, at the Conservancy, are happy to work with the committee and any others to help formulate new ways to incentivize partner investments for healthy forests and watersheds. Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen. Please now to recognize Chief Littenberg for five minutes of your testimony. Please go ahead and proceed, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman Thompson, Ranking Member, Ron Grisham, and bring my regards from New Mexico, and members of the subcommittee. Today, I am testifying on behalf of the International Association of Fire Chiefs, where I serve as the Chair of the Wildland Fire Policy Committee. And I thank you for the opportunity to discuss the 2015 fire season and the needs of America's departments. We have heard some statistics, which I won't recount, but I will bring some new ones to the table, and that is that local fire departments respond to almost all wildland fire incidents. For fires on federal lands, they cooperate with the U.S. Department of Interior and the U.S. Department of Agriculture's U.S. Forest Service. Local fire departments provide the initial attack for nearly 80% of all wildland fires. This assistance by local governments totals more than $36 billion per year, according to the U.S. Forest Service. On non-federal property, local fire departments are the first to respond and often the last to leave the incident. The IFC has been a strong supporter of the cohesive strategy, which brought together local, tribal, state, federal, and nongovernmental partners, many of whom are in this room, to address the wildland fire problem. Through a multi-year, three-stage process, the cohesive strategy outlined a plan to tackle wildland fire through fire suppression, community preparedness, and land management. Similarly, the IFC has several recommendations for Congress in these same areas. First, Congress must support the fire suppression efforts through effective funding and equipment procurement policies. The IFC is greatly concerned about the practice known as fire borrowing, in which DOI and U.S. Forest Service are forced to shift funds from non-suppression accounts to suppression accounts after expending their annual wildland fire suppression funding. This dangerous practice only serves to worsen the fire problem by limiting important prevention and mitigation projects. Congress must address this problem by developing a funding reform proposal that prohibits fire borrowing and funds 100% of the 10-year average of suppression costs. Any costs above 100% of the 10-year average should be funded through an adjustment to the disaster relief cap. Additionally, any savings must be directly reinvested in wildland fire prevention and community preparedness programs. In addition to funding reform for the USDA and DOI, Congress must also address declining federal support for local wildland fire operations. Since fiscal year 2010, Congress has reduced funding for the Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant Program by nearly 20% from $16 million in 2010 to $13 million in 2015. Additionally, in fiscal year 2010, Congress eliminated the Rural Fire Assistance Grant Program, which further helped budget-strapped fire departments obtain equipment they need. In July, the House unanimously adopted an amendment to increase VFA funding to $14 million in fiscal year 2016. We encourage Congress to include this funding increase in any fiscal year 2016 appropriations bill. The IFC also encourages Congress to support fire department preparedness by ensuring that we have the tools and equipment that we may need. The U.S. Department of Defense and USDA jointly run two programs which allow fire departments to utilize, and in many cases, purchase access vehicles and other equipment from the DOD. These programs were suspended by the DOD and then restarted in 2014 over concerns about emission regulations. The IFC strongly encourages Congress to protect these common sense programs by passing H.R. 177, the Firefighter Equipment Protection Act. Number two, to assist in developing fire-adapted communities, the IFC urges Congress to support outreach and education efforts. Since 2011, the IFC has developed and expanded the Ready, Set, Go program, which educates communities on way to be ready for fires, set if the need for an evacuation arises, and go when it's time to evacuate. Ready, Set, Go has been implemented by more than 1,500 fire departments across the nation and provides a strong platform for fire departments to engage with their communities to ensure they are prepared and knowledgeable about the dangers of wildland fires. Other organizations also are involved in actively implementing community preparedness and education programs, and we encourage Congress to support Ready, Set, Go and other programs to address this important aspect of wildland fire prevention and mitigation. And last, Congress must address land management issues as a long-term solution to the wildland fire problem. The dangerously dry conditions through the west and the southwest states prime wildland areas for fires and underscores the need to complete hazardous fuels removal projects and other land management programs. By improving the health of our lands, we can address some of the larger wildland fire factors. Congress also must pay particular attention to the watersheds where wildland fires can cause especially dangerous consequences for drinking water and surrounding communities as a whole. It's certainly something we recognize in all of the west. In addition to these land management policies, Congress also should pass H.R. 1009, the Wildfire Prevention Act of 2015, which would permit recipients of fire management assistance grants to use up to 15% of the grant amount for post-wildland fire mitigation projects to prevent flooding, landslides, and other dangerous conditions caused by wildland fires. Thank you again for your continued attention to this important issue and the opportunity to attend this hearing. Thanks again.
Chief, thank you so much for your testimony. Colonel Priti, honored to have you here, and go ahead and proceed with your five minutes of testimony.
Thank you, Chairman, and our ranking member, Ron Grisham, and members of the committee. Let me personally start with thanks to our fire chief, Tidwell. The company, from its very thoughts of protecting the nation, if you will, from wildfires, has worked with the Forest Service as partners. Yes, we're contractors, but we are also partners, and partners with the troops on the ground as well. Thus far, in the 2015 fire season, Ten Tanker has flown more than 400 missions, delivering approximately 4.5 million gallons of suppressant, sometimes called retardant, specifically where our ground commander requested, and also, as demonstrated by lead airplanes, for the most part, we fly behind lead airplanes. We've flown over on more than 80 wildfires. As has been discussed, the statistics are fairly well-known and presented, by the way, at NIFC.gov as far as number of fires and things like that. But the impact on the nation goes far beyond that. Quality of air, water, homes destroyed, businesses destroyed, et cetera, et cetera. So while this research is ongoing, and it absolutely has to be well-funded, then we feel like that our professional firefighters on the ground already know what works best in a given situation for the foreseeable future. For air tanker operation, that experience calls for suppressant and sufficient quantity at the right place as directed and at the right time to support our ground troops, our firefighters, if you will. Now, as far as the future is concerned, we feel like suppression from fixed-wing aircraft is where improvement of equipment can occur. And I would point out, agree, Forest Service needs many tools. Helicopters were mentioned earlier along, but again, we're stressing fixed wing, and specifically, large air tankers, such as the proposed newly manufactured C-130J, but also the very large air tankers, and that's what we're designated because we fly four times as much suppressant in one mission as anyone else. Then we have a designation by the Forest Service, and we're the only very large tanker out there. The Forest Service has funding and has put out an RFP for a newly manufactured air tanker. And because of the details in that, we're certain it'll be a Lockheed C-130. I flew C-5s and 141s. Have great respect for Lockheed. Now, that concept will be government-owned, contractor-operated. So what we have done recently is, we have told our partners at Fire Service, we believe that concept should be expanded to the C-130 because while it's not a newly manufactured airplane, a thoroughly overhauled DC-10 air tanker can be delivered to the Forest Service very efficiently and in timely manner and be serviceable for decades to come and at approximately 1/3 the cost. Each will provide 3.5, four times as much as a C-130J or any other tanker that's likely to come about in the future. More, sooner, safer, cheaper. That's what we bring to the defense of the nation, and we're very proud to do so. Thank you very much for letting us testify.
Colonel, thank you so much for your service and thank you for your testimony. Thanks to all the panelists for testimony. We're going to proceed with five minutes of questioning, and I'm going to reserve my time. And so, I recognize Dr. Benesek from Michigan for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. Let me start with the fire chief. Chief, how is the coordination between the Forest Service and the local fire people? You know, how does that work? Are you familiar with that?
If you're asking for an anecdotal answer, I'll tell you that the Fire Service as a whole feels like the U.S. Forest Service is a good partner and that the coordination is relatively effective. Our mutual partnership comes from the fact that all of us have the same mission, which is the protection of our communities. And certainly, on a local level, in Santa Fe and in New Mexico, I feel like we have a good relationship with our U.S. Forest Service partners, and therefore, the communication is quite solid.
Thanks. Dr. Toppick, Mr. Haberly talked about the spotted owl problem and the way it's changed the whole situation out west. I mean, does the Endangered Species Act need to be revised? Or what can we, I mean, it seems to me that some of the things that he mentioned are, was led to overall degradation of the habitat. I mean, despite, I don't know, there's a lot of controversy about that whole thing, but can you give us your perspective on this and what, you know, this one species has done to a bunch of other species? Can you kind of weigh in on that for me, because I'm kind of curious?
Yeah, I'll try. Sort of the cursive in ecologist, I was trained as a forest ecologist, is that you want to understand the specific ecology of the habitats. And when you're dealing with the Cascade Mountains, and I worked in the Cascades for many, many years, you have tremendous variation in climates, going from very, very dry areas to rainforests, sometimes in just 10 miles. And so, that's something you have to remember. You're going from climates like from Canada to Mexico in just a small area. So the northern spotted owl becomes a particular challenge on the fire issue when you get onto the east side forests that Mr. Haberly was talking about on the Wanachi side, where you do have areas that are very dense forests that used to be more sparse. They used to have, you know, the fire model that we've heard about was more common. So I think there's a real challenge, what I see, sort of as a, the short answer, it could go into long, you know, wonky answers. I think the short answer is that we need to balance the positive aspects of fire risk reduction from doing the kind of thinning that Mr. Haberly talked about versus the potential, maybe, short-term impact on a particular nest site. And so, that's something that I think is real important, that we, when we interact with these laws, that we balance the plus and the minuses.
I don't think it works quite that way, though.
I think there's more and more opportunities for that, and so, that's what I would look for in guidance, to be able to suggest, for instance, if these things do get to courts, that we balance.
Okay, well, let me go on to another question here. What could the federal government or the Forest Service do to help motivate more groups to partner and collaborate with the Forest Service? and collaborate with the Forest Service on some of these stewardship issues?
Well, I mean, the one thing, there's a bunch of things, but one thing specifically, I believe that the ability of small amounts of money from the Forest Service, but also from industries and others, to help get community organizers and facilitators to figure out what's needed locally, the kind of stuff that our Fire Adapted Communities Learning Network is doing, that, I think, can have tremendous benefits because then that can be a way of bringing in resources and interests from lots of different people. I mean, some of these areas where we've studied, for instance, in the northern Sierras, the benefits of very guided thinning can have tremendous benefits to downstream water users and have a big impact on agriculture, positive impact and a big impact on industry.
So, you know, one of the things that we talk about in Congress is making the local community more of a part of the Forest Service decision-making process. Would you be in favor of something like that?
That's what we believe in. And our group, the Nature Conservancy, is definitely engaged in that. And I think having the collaborative kind of model where the local community works together, and you have to remember that there's going to be downstream users that, you know, in the Northwest, that maybe water uses 200 miles away. They can't be forgotten. And the recreation industries, places like the Northwest, huge recreation industries, those are important players, too. But I think that's a key part, to have more people helping guide the actual projects, definitely.
And people from the area that the project is actually taking place in.
Yeah, the people from the area have to be key players, but it also, as a national resource, needs to take in.
Does that occur now to any degree?
Absolutely. The specific example mentioned is the Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Program, which has separate legislation, separate money, 40 million a year, I wish it was more, for 23 spots. And some of those are some pretty neat projects. We don't have any, unfortunately, in Michigan. We have some wonderful ones in Arkansas. It'd be great if you could ever see those.
Right, I'm out of time, sorry.
When this time expires, please recognize the ranking member for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go to Colonel Pretty, and I appreciate very much your description that we want all the tools. It's not one kind of fire suppression system over another, but recognizing that our fires are hotter and last longer. We're really dealing with mega fires, mega wildfires. And in that context, really being clear that we want every opportunity. And that's been the theme of every, of our expert witnesses, that we've got to have a multimodal management aspect that moves us away from fire borrowing and gives us the opportunity to manage at the front end and the back end. Can you elaborate just a little more about the benefits as part of the tools and resources, these large tanker opportunities, so that you can address these mega fires?
Thank you. First of all, we would hope that initial attack works. And by the way, we've done initial attack a number of times. We can make multiple drops on the same mission. So we have literally surrounded four or five drops and taken care of the initial attack. We're most often called because of the process. We're most often called after a fire has expanded well beyond that. And I don't want to say large fire because that's defined as 100,000 acres or more. And we get called, obviously, much before that. But the best way we can help after that is downwind and/or uphill from the fire, have the ground commander place us in a retardant line. Block the fire, not put it out, block the fire. We produce more than 50 feet wide, three-quarters of a mile long. That's about four bulldozers' width or something like that. And then that gives the ground forces the opportunity to bring those bulldozers, or there are other tools in there, and expand that blockage such that we now control.
And potentially put us in a position, not only to manage those fires, but protect the men and women who are fighting those fires on the ground to a much higher degree.
Absolutely, that's our passion.
Thank you. I'm going to, my second question is for Chris Topick. And we've been talking a lot about the fire borrowing problem and the fact that, given the increased cost of fighting these fires, which are increasing in nature for a whole variety of reasons that we've discussed today, we can't keep up there. But it's not really an accurate reflection of the true cost of wildfires because we aren't really talking about the recovery aspect. And given your collaborative work, I'd like this committee to be really clear that in terms of protecting the watersheds and restoring these communities and dealing with utilities and private property issues, that it's hundreds of millions of dollars across the country in trying to do post-recovery work. But we don't really have a funding system to deal with that post-recovery work. Can you talk a little bit about that and what some of your ideas are to make sure that we are addressing that as well?
Thank you very much, Congresswoman. Yeah, I think a lot of the conversation often has dealt with the cost of fire suppression, which is very large, but we know that the actual impacts are huge. I mean, some of the examples, unfortunately, I was present at the fires in San Diego County in 2003. Very nice graphics presented there that show that the fire suppression costs for that fire are about 4% of the total negative impact, which was about $700 million. Similarly, the Ecological Restoration Institute in northern Arizona has done some very good work showing impacts across the board, losses of water, timber. And in New Mexico, particularly, what we're very hopeful, and as you know, we had the, one of our staffers, Laura McCarthy, got to talk to this committee.
You all do a shout-out. It's incredible in our state, we thank you.
She is fabulous. But that work is something that the Nature Conservancy and 40 other collaborators, I mean, this is including all kinds of industries, the states, the counties, and this is what we need. And so you have so much need to get the restoration work done. And so what they're doing is working across all these boundaries, federal, state, the pueblos are so important in New Mexico, to figure out how we can merge pools of money because we know it's going to have benefits. We know the incredible harm that was done to Albuquerque's water system, you know, the place where people and money reside in New Mexico. And it's just, there's a lot that can be done to reduce those kind of impacts. And so they're working on a structured governance ability to have different parties, whether you're in the pueblo or the state or the county, or you're in an industry down in Albuquerque, to have an input to figure out where there's going to be return on investment, which kind of projects will have the biggest benefit.
I'm out of time, and I'm going to ask for the committee's forgiveness. Could you follow up, not in your testimony, but in writing to this committee about not only the productive impacts of the collaborations, which I think we all understand, but what some of those funding mechanisms might be, including to maybe erode without creating other unforeseen consequences, the ability to move money in places, no more borrowing, but leverage it across departments who are part of these collaborations? I would be very interested in how we can leverage some of the resources we currently have to deal with these unrecovered costs. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, General Lee. Now I recognize the gentleman from Georgia, Congressman Allen, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There we go, got it. Thank you. This is a different room. Well, listen, thank you all for being here today. And of course, what I hear from my constituents is the horrible mismanagement of our forests and the contributing factor to both, not only disease, but also to forest fires. And I was interested on this spotted owl incident. Obviously, there was a lawsuit filed to stop the management of that forest area. Was it an injunction? I mean, did they, did the judge serve an injunction to stop management of the forest? Or did the government quit managing it because there was a lawsuit? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
Well, I used to live in Oregon, so I was right in the middle of this oil growth issue in the 1980s. And so just in brief, and it would, it's so involved, it takes many pages to dictate all the different combinations.
Well, I don't have much time.
No, you don't have that kind of time. So there were all kinds of different sorts of legal ramifications before the northern spotted owl was listed. And then July of 1990, it was federally listed. And so then there was more activities after that that had both legal and administrative ramifications. So it's a very complicated history.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering if you went ahead and managed the forest, were you actually breaking the law? And Mr. Haberly, I want to apologize to you for the destruction that you've had to deal with. And can you elaborate on that? In other words, you know, why we couldn't continue on with the management of the forests? Has this thing got worked out in the court system? Yes, sir, Mr. Haberly.
I can't necessarily answer that question, but I'd like to address the first part of your question.
Okay.
I was an accountant at Biles &amp; Coleman Lumber Company when that issue first came up. And our mills consisted of three different sawmills that were highly dependent on National Forest Service timber. And there was an extremely good market for that timber and had been for years and years and years. The spotted owl controversy reared its head, and those timber sales were addressed by environmentalists, if I could use that word, with 37-cent stamps on an envelope that just challenged that timber sale, and they were avoided. They no longer put those out for the mill to even come and bid on. It just instantly was over. Now, whether it was in a court action, I don't think so. But I think the court.
There was a decision by the forestry department not to.
That's what I believe. Now, somebody else here may know way more than that, and I would like to research that and get more to you.
Yeah, I think that's the thing. I mean, breaking the law is one thing, but doing the right thing despite the fact that you've got somebody that doesn't agree with what you're doing is a whole other matter. And that's what we need to get to the bottom of here.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is the impact to the industry was immediate.
Yeah, right. Well, that's this top-down government approach. It's a problem for private industry. I was also interested that you lease, you do lease some federal land?
Yes.
Is, tell me how that, is that working for you? Are you able to manage that land without all these interferences? Or is that maybe an answer to some of the collaboration we need to deal with as far as, actually, with the forestry department not having the resources? Should we lease more forestry, forest land?
In my particular case, and I think I can speak for most of the lessees in Okanagan County, Forest Service leases are a very good thing. The only bad thing about them is the forest not being logged, not being thin, not being cleaned for 40 years now has led to a canopy closure of the forest, reducing grass and increasing fire fuels.
So you're not able to manage the forest although you're leasing the forest?
Correct.
Okay, why would you sign a contract like that?
Because I want to lease the forage that's on the forest.
I got you.
And through the years, that forage volume has disappeared because of the increase in the brush and the debris.
Yeah, so going back to collaboration, it would be good if we could have a meeting of the minds on those folks who lease the property, on how properly to manage that forest land.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That would be a solution?
And I know I'm prejudiced, but to me, grazing those lands is as critical as reducing the timber on those lands because they both reduce combustible fuels.
Well, you folks know how to do it. And like I said, we've got a 40% sustainable rate in our forest, and I'm proud of the job y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang in there.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, yield's back. The gentleman from Washington, Mr. Newhouse, is not a member of the subcommittee but has joined us today pursuant to Committee Rule 11E. I have consulted with the ranking member. We're pleased to welcome him to join in the question of witnesses. Mr. Newhouse, you're recognized for five minutes of questioning.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Madam Ranking Member. I appreciate having the opportunity to sit here with you. I'm a member of the Agriculture Committee as well as the Natural Resources Committee. And as you can imagine, this very topic has been a big part of our discussion since January and so happy to be here to learn more about what we can do to help our health of our forests. I did want to take a second. I will submit some questions for the record, but just take a second to thank Chief Tidwell for visiting the state of Washington during the fire season, also for participating and being in attendance at the memorial in Wenatchee for the three firefighters that lost their lives. We, as a state, are still mourning their losses and appreciate your attendance there. Particularly, I wanted to welcome my constituent, Mr. Haberly, for coming here this morning and enlightening us with your insight, your perspective, your experience of being a part of a fifth-generation ranch family in Okanagan County, I think is invaluable for people here to listen to and to understand. So I appreciate your doing that, taking the time with some of your colleagues, being here this morning. I would like to, in relation to that, Mr. Chairman, ask unanimous consent to submit for the record a letter I have from 12 counties in the state of Washington that are part of what's called the Evergreen Forest County Group. It's, in this, it includes solutions from their perspective on how to improve federal forest management policy.
Without objection.
Thank you. So in the short time that we have, I'd like to, Mr. Haberly, ask you to expound a little bit on your testimony, if you could. I lived through the spotted owl thing as well. I had family that lived on the Olympic Peninsula, saw the impact to many communities around the state. I think in your testimony, I did not know this, but we had over 90 sawmills in the state of Washington. Now, today, we have about 30. You were involved in the forest industry at that time. So could you discuss a little bit, and you touched on it with Mr. Allen, some of the efforts to protect spotted owl, the impact that that had on not only timber production but forest health? And in your estimation, how does current forest health compare to what it was 40 years ago?
Well, in my opinion, I think most all of what we're talking about here today as far as our concerns and trying to find cures are the result of 40 years that I've watched of overreaction to a spotted owl, overreaction to riparian areas, overreaction to what we call wetlands and define them as such today. Because if you look at the impact the spotted owl had, part of the reason I heard today that we haven't got a good sale for National Forest Timber is because we've lost 60 mills in the state of Washington that used to buy that timber. I will also say, with my experience with a fairly substantial-sized mill in Washington State at that time, we have to be concerned as we go down the road in the future that we don't overharvest a renewable resource, which timber is. It's a crop, it's a plant, it grows. If we don't harvest it, it's going to overgrow, and it's going to do what we have seen because we haven't harvested in Washington for 40 years. If we overharvest it, we're going to create a problem just as big on the other side. And for stability in the timber industry, for us to be able to sell our National Forest Timber, and one of the spokespeople here today said it, we have to create an environment for that sawmill that is stable, steady, reliable, they can count on it. They have to have that volume on a steady basis. It can't come and go. It can't come and go every time somebody decides there's another endangered species. And to me, that is the real, real big problem with the Endangered Species Act. All somebody has to do is wave their hand, All somebody has to do is wave their hand, something else is endangered, and then we overreact to it for 50 years. And we have done that with a spotted owl, without any question in my mind at all. Look at what it's destroyed. Everything we're talking about here today is what the results of that are. Have I answered your question?
Yeah, I think, yeah, appreciate that. Thank you. And I see my time has already quickly expired, but I appreciate you being here. And it's my goal that we can actually accomplish something in this Congress that will help for the long run the health of our forests. So thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
I thank gentlemen for joining us today. I appreciate your service on the Agriculture Committee. I guess I get the last five minutes. So the, Mr. Haverly, I want to, appreciate the opportunity to read your testimony, to talk with you when you, yesterday, we were able to meet briefly and to hear about just the, you know, the wildfires, your experience firsthand, living with that situation over the past 40 years. And it was striking to me, I appreciate within your testimony that every member has, we have a couple pictures, talk about compare and contrast. As we know, we're not going to stop fires. You know, lightning strikes, the question is, what burns? And how quickly do we, are those fires controlled? And we're not here to say we're going to stop wildfires, we just want to reduce the impact and make it something we can live with and we can afford. So my first question is for you, and it really has, you know, given the wildfires are a reoccurring national crisis, you know, some of the principles of, it was striking that you had relayed to me anecdotal facts about bulldozer, a cat driver, who was functioning either on state or private lands and very successfully reduced the spread of the fire, but was stopped by Forest Service personnel, because suppose that person didn't have some certificate? And which brings to mind, are there things that we, tools that we need to be able to provide to chief and the service that would provide more of a safe harbor so that we can use these collaborations, these tools? And then, you know, is there a role for state primacy as well in terms of, when it's a national crisis, you know, in terms of what rules get implemented? Basically, to eliminate any barriers that the Forest Service has during those times that would be helpful.
Last year, the Washington State Legislature, I think in reaction to having dealt with the previous year's largest fire in Washington State history, did pass a law that private contractors on state or private land can use their equipment without being held in harm. And that has been practiced this year, and it is a very successful program. I hope it expands. But one of the problems that we have in Washington State is that the National Forest Service, if you're a contractor, and I'm going to use a bulldozer as example, but you could throw in a whole host of other equipment, but if you contract with the National Forest Service with a bulldozer, you have to get on a computer, you have to go through a lot of hoops and jumps. And bulldozer operators that have logged in the forest and have been timber people don't necessarily connect with computers real well. So, and they're some of your most talented and very best firefighter people. So there's a little bit of a problem there. That's probably overcomeable, but if you want to do a National Forest Service contract, that's one thing. If you want to work for the Department of Natural Resources of the state, whole other computer program and another contract, the two do not coincide. So when we get these fires, they don't have any idea, a fire has no idea whether this is federal land, state land, private land, Indian reservation, they don't know. But as that fire moves, if it's National Forest, the National Forest wants you to have that contract. If it's state land, they want you to have that contract. Real problem there. And in OMAC, Okanagan, in these complex fires the last couple of years, D8 bulldozers have gone out and successfully stopped this fire and been held up by National Forest when they hit their ground. And that is a big problem. We need to figure out how to marry all of these different contracts with different ownerships of land. The objective is to fight the fire, not each other.
Right.
And that needs to be solved.
Well, having, having spent a lot of time with members of the, employees within the Forest Service, who, you know, good folks, who really care and take seriously the responsibility, I got to imagine just how frustrated they felt when they had to enforce this bureaucracy, when they knew, they could see the benefits that were occurring on other adjoining lands, and yet because we haven't provided them the right tools, you know, they couldn't let that cat or bulldozer proceed. And so that's something we need to look at. Appreciate it. Dr. Tobick, in your testimony, you mentioned that recent discussion on a solution for catastrophic wildfires has focused too much on timber harvest. Granted that, you know, a significant number of lanes or of acreages, not forest, noting that many damaging fires occurred in woodland brush and areas not suitable for commercial tree harvest. To me, these areas sound like great areas to graze livestock. And would that, would that not have helped clear at least some of that hazardous fuels?
Yeah, I certainly agree that appropriate grazing is a good use of the landscape. I mean, I support what Mr. Haverly said about that. It really depends on where you're at, though. That's what I was trying to get at, that in terms of the fire problem itself, there's so much that's happening in and around communities. There's so much the communities can do. And as Mr. Haverly said, the preparatory work, we know these fires are going to come. And so if we can have the communities be fire-adapted and work together to figure out those kind of contracting snafus ahead of time. I mean, that's something we've seen in parts of California with the California Fire Safe Council, for instance, being able to serve as a clearinghouse to get people prepared. So that work at the community level to make sure you have it in place is vital. And in particular, in terms of the big damage, these, a lot of the worst fires this year have been right around towns and low elevation. Even in Washington State, many of the horrible, horrible fires have been down in the towns. And so there's a lot that needs to be done right there also. I mean, that's a key part.
My time has expired, not that I couldn't ask questions on this topic all day long, but we have a, we have a primary election we need to get to in terms of leadership. Maybe they'll have it figured out until we get there, Mr. Newhouse. But that said, I will just want to thank all the panelists--
Mr. Chairman, do you need my help?
This is one occasion I'm not going to yield to the ranking member, but I will yield for any closing statements or remarks you might like to make.
I just want to sincerely thank you for bringing this hearing. I want you to know that the chairman and I, early in planning the year, talked about the opportunity, if we had them, to do field hearings. It's an area that the chairman has, I think, gone above and beyond to make sure that the committee's got the right leadership to think about ways to balance our investments, to add flexibility, so that we're doing everything that we can, not only to protect the interests of the community. So thank you, Mr. Haverly, but also looking at ways that affect directly of firefighting. And I'm very grateful for our two New Mexico experts. And I will tell you that the fire chief really does work diligently across incredible jurisdictional issues to make sure that we have enough men and women on the ground. And I'm worried about those budgets as well. So plenty for us to do, and we appreciate your time and attention here today. Thank you.
General Lee yields back. I want to, just want to take the opportunity to thank the panelists and your expertise. I think in a little over two hours, we've just gotten a tremendous amount of great information. They're all very fertile for looking at, we've worked hard to try to provide some tools, whether it was through the continuing resolution, some of the proposal, other proposals that are out there, certainly HR 2647, which really emphasizes collaboratives. I heard that word over and over again. And I want to thank, I think, want to thank Chief Tidwell. We frequently get folks in on the first panel who are representatives of the administration, and they normally leave right after their testimony. Chief Tidwell is not, he cares. And I'm not saying the others don't, but he demonstrates it by being here to listen to the testimony. And chief, that's always greatly appreciated. I heard a lot of good ideas here. If I'd, you know, and comprehensive ideas. I put, I would put them into five different categories. And I may have missed something, because this was a pretty quick analysis of what we talked about today, but I heard about increasing markets, obviously getting the value up for timber of all sides, from saw logs to that brush, finding markets for it, increasing value for it. Heard about, obviously, the funding needs. We get that. Heard about collaboratives and the role that that plays. Also heard about the impact of litigation. And litigation is, you know, there's 16 forests that are more vulnerable today because of litigation. And we have to ask ourselves, why is that occurring? Is it unnecessary? Is it abusive? But that's one of those things. I heard a lot about resources and tools, from the size of air tankers to, you know, tools to be able to, you know, allow our, you know, the 49% reduction in foresters. These are the, these are the people with the expertise in terms of making sure we can get our job done, of tools that we may, that we, certainly sounds like we need to look at, inexcusable that we would place on our Forest Service personnel an obligation to turn effective help away when it's at the boundary of the forest, and much more, and much more within in this testimony. And it all just greatly appreciated. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the staff for their expertise and their leadership in helping us on both sides of the aisle, bringing this together. And under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from witnesses to any questions posed by a member of this Subcommittee on Conservation and Forestry hearing is now adjourned.